The following is a production of KeriTV, the Town of Keri's government access channel.
Call to order the December 8th meeting of the Keri Town Council. And at this time, I'll recognize Councilmember Bush for our ceremonial opening.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First order of business is to adopt the agenda. There's been one requested amendment to our agenda. December is fiscal year 2018 Public Budget Input Month. Staff has requested council to amend the schedule this evening to include a public hearing for the budget input. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda as amended?
Some have...
Second.
There's a motion and a second discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We now move to recognitions, reports, and presentations. We have special guests in our audience this evening. We have Cub Scouts, PAC 202 from St. Francis Methodist Church in our audience. We also have the Arrow of Light Den from PAC 244 in Keri, and they're from Peace Presbyterian Church. And if you'll stand at this time and be recognized. Thank you for being here this evening. Our first recognition of the night is the 2017 Employee of the Year recognition. And at this time, I'll call on Town Manager Sean Steigl to introduce the other.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, it is an honor to be standing here with the town's 2016 Employee of the Year Judy Newsom. Each of you knows Judy and what an incredible contribution she's made to our community during her 14 years with the Town of Keri. But for those of you here tonight or watching at home, I'll provide a few highlights of her amazing work. As our specialized recreation and inclusion specialist, Judy develops recreational opportunities for people of all ages with disabilities. This means creating hundreds of classes and events specifically for that portion of our citizenry, as well as finding effective ways to include them in existing town programming and events. This includes a wide array of activities such and diverse such as zip line adventures, rope course team building, cooking classes, and even an annual fall fashion show. To support her colleagues, Judy has developed special training that highlights tools and techniques so that everyone can feel more confident when serving this special population. Simply put, Judy has a positive impact on the lives of so many people by doing the work that most of us would find impossible. Judy, please accept this plaque as a very small reminder of our admiration and appreciation of your talents, energy...
Give you the flag. Yeah. Oh, that's okay.
It's appreciation of our admiration and of your talents, energy, passion, and heart. Thank you, Judy.
Well, Sean asked me to say a few words. Thank you so much. As I mentioned yesterday, when I got this awesome recognition, I certainly appreciate all the council members, as well as the admin, Town Admin staff, and Doug McCraney and Dwayne Jones having the foresight for funding the specialized recreation and inclusion program area. It's a program that is definitely needed here in the Town of Keri, and we have some awesome participants and families in our programs, and I would love for anybody to come out and visit our programs and meet our folks. And thank you so much for this awesome recognition.
Thank you, Judy. We're blessed to have somebody like you on our staff, and thank you for all you do. Okay, we now move to our second item, presentation of Fiscal Year 2016 Conference of Annual Financial Report. We're going to hear an introduction from Mr. Steigl and then Karen Mills of our Finance Department, and from staff, oh, and staff from Cherry Beckett and Holland. Mr. Steigl.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to begin by congratulating our CFO Karen Mills and her team for their great work once again on putting together our financial report. It's also recognition of the all-town departments for their stewardship and once again producing great results. Tonight, Karen will be presenting the town's comprehensive annual financial report, or more commonly known as the CAFR, which represents the official record of the town's financial activity for the year ended June 30th, 2016. The CAFR is the companion piece to the town's budget. The key distinction being that a budget makes a prediction about what will happen, and a CAFR tells you what actually happened. I'm pleased to report that for fiscal year end 2016, the town's general fund saw revenues exceed expenditures by $22 million. However, the fiscal year 2016-2017 budget anticipated $17 million of that $22 million to fund the current capital program. Therefore, there is $5 million available for appropriation. As the 2017-2018 budget planning process is underway, the staff will be prepared to discuss options for allocating these additional proceeds at the January retreat. Turn it over to Karen.
Good evening, council. We're here tonight with our audit partner, April Adams, from the CPA firm of Cherry Beckett, to present good news about the town's fiscal year 2016 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. We'll summarize what is included in the report and address key financial conclusions. Then Ms. Adams will discuss the audit process and results from the auditor's perspective. Before we dig into some of the details, I can tell you that we are reporting on another successful year, both in terms of financial results and in our accounting and reporting processes. The Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, also referred to as the CAFR, is the responsibility of the Town of Keri and has been prepared by the town for the town. It provides transparency and accountability to our citizens by opening up all of our records, providing a summary of the year's activity and historical trends. The report exceeds minimum standards and demonstrates best practices for governmental reporting. The financial report has been audited by independent certified public accountants, the national CPA firm of Cherry Beckett. The CAFR includes five sections. An introductory section provides broad perspective on the town organization and history. The financial section includes the traditional financial statements, explanatory notes to the details, as well as the auditor's opinion. It provides an interesting combining statement for the entire government similar to that of for-profit companies. Management's discussion and analysis is included in this section, and it provides highlights of key results in a prescribed format. The supplementary information section provides greater detail on capital projects, utility operations, and other internal funds. The statistical section provides 10-year trends on financial performance, revenue and debt capacity, as well as demographic, economic, and operating information. The compliance section includes details about federal and state grants and our bond covenants, as well as the auditor's opinions on the town's compliance with those legal commitments that were given in exchange for those funding sources. The big-picture key messages in the report reflect the town's strong financial position. There's cash in the bank, there's a full reporting of the debt on all of our books, and a resulting positive net position. In commonly understood terms, there's black ink on the bottom line, and spending indicates progress on town commitments and priorities for capital projects. This report demonstrates that the town exercises stewardship with expenditures under budget and revenues over budget. The net results in the general fund, as Mr. Steigl mentioned, were $22 million better than budget in total. This is consistent with the town's historical approach to financial management, which is based on budgets that are achievable, and excess funds dedicated to the town's 10-year capital plan for pay-as-you-go spending. And as he mentioned, while the results were $22 million better than budget, only $5 million exceeded the town's FY '17 planning and commitments to future infrastructure spending. In similar fashion, but on a different scale, the utility fund finished the year $7 million better than budget. Looking at the general fund, revenue per capita shows that revenue per capita has increased less than 1% since 2008. Decreased investment income has impacted the town, which is a result of lower market interest rates over many years. Total general fund expenditures, including operations, debt service, and capital spending, have decreased almost 8% per capita since 2008. Looking at revenues and expenditures together reflects when total expenditures, including those capital investments, outpaced our operating revenues on a per capita basis. At those times, additional resources were provided with reasonable debt financing and capital revenues. I want to assure you that the town's operations are fiscally sound, with operating revenues adequate to cover operating and debt service expenditures. In the utility fund, despite rate increases, utility customers have lowered their demand on average. Charges for service per customer have decreased 17% since 2008, an average of almost 2% per Looking back at the audit and the reporting process includes a positive reflection: the lack of suggestions for improvement from the auditors in a management letter, early submission of the CAFR to the State Treasurer's Office, and likely recognition for excellence in reporting from our peers in government finance. The timely preparation, successful audit, and financial results together demonstrate that the town manages our resources with a focus on safety, protect the town's cash and assets, and with good stewardship designed to provide flexibility for council priorities. The process provides credibility through transparency and results in sound financial operations. For anyone who's interested in seeing this report, like the budget document, this report is on the town's website at townofkerry.org, and a copy is also available at the Keri Library. We appreciate the support of council that facilitates these results. We are also grateful for the attention to detail and fiscal stewardship from all town staff, which is an essential component of our achievements. Specifically in the Finance Department, Michelle Price and Judy Donardis deserve special recognition for the effort that they've invested in preparing this document and for their expertise. I'm very sad to report that Michelle Price is retiring this month after 25 years of dedicated service. As one of the most talented governmental accounting professionals in the country, her retirement will be a huge adjustment for us. I miss her. April Adams, our audit partner in the CPA firm of Cherry Beckett, is here with us tonight to finish this presentation. And after her presentation, Ms. Adams and I are both happy to answer any questions.
Good evening. I'm happy to be here to share the results of the June 30, 2016 financial audit. As your auditors, we're required to conduct your audit in accordance with two different auditing standards. One is the generally accepted auditing standards of the United States, and the second set is the governmental auditing standards. Those standards require that we plan and inform your audit to obtain reasonable assurance about whether those financial statements are free of material misstatement. What that means is that we use professional judgment as to where the risk of material misstatement exists in your financial statements, and that we didn't test every single transaction that occurred during the year. We're required to express opinions on the result of the audit, and for the town, we actually express four different audit opinions. The first is on the financial statements themselves, the front part of the CAFR, and then the next opinion is also known as the Yellow Book Opinion. That's the opinion that we give in accordance with those governmental audit standards, and that is related to the internal control environment, as well as compliance with any laws and regulations that are required. The next two opinions are based on the federal and state grant funding that you receive, and we do some testing related to the compliance of that, and so that's the opinion on whether you are in compliance. I am happy to report that you guys did receive four clean opinions. All four opinions were clean. We call that an unmodified opinion, and that's the highest level of assurance that we can give you, that those financial statements are free of material misstatement, that you're in compliance with the laws and regulations, and that the programs were administered with compliance of those requirements. Those auditing standards also require that we communicate to you several other matters related to the audit. We do that in two ways: one, through this presentation itself, as well as through a letter that's issued to the council. There's a few things that I want to highlight that's in that letter for you tonight. One is that we do want to confirm that we were independent and maintained our independence throughout this audit. Two is that there was one significant change in policy, and that was the adoption of Gatsby Statement Number 73. And basically, what that did was take your law enforcement special separation allowance. You typically, in the past, have reported that in a separate fiduciary fund, and that standard required that because that fund wasn't kept in a true trust fund by definition, that you now need to report it in your general fund. And so that change was made in the current year, and you'll see that reflected in these statements. The second thing I want to bring to your attention is that there are a significant amount of estimates in your financial statements. Those include your allowance for your doubtful accounts, your depreciation of capital assets, your pension liabilities, and your post-employment benefit liabilities. I am pleased to let you know that there were no adjusting journal entries or past adjusting journal entries related to this audit. And what that means for you is that the books and records that were given to us to audit were indeed the books and records that ended up in this CAFR. That means that Karen and her team can provide books and records to us that don't need any adjustment, and so that they've got good controls and an environment in place to give us an accurate reflection of what happens during the year. With that, I'd like to thank Karen and her team for the tremendous amount of work that they put in to create those books and records, and they keep us top of mind during this audit process. I mean, it takes a long time and a lot of hours to put it together, but they are very effective and efficient at getting us what we need, and we really appreciate that. It makes for a smooth audit process. And I will be glad to take any questions.
Ms. Mills and Ms. Adams, thank you for the report. And all the years I've been here, it's been nothing but excellent every time. And I know that doesn't come easy, as was stated. And thank you, all of you, especially the ones that are retiring, for all the work you've done to keep us in such a strong financial position. Questions or comments from other council members? Thank you.
Thank you.
We now move to our third presentation tonight, the presentation of the Gold Medal Award. I'll once again turn it over to our Town Manager for the introduction.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll wait for Doug and the team to arrive here. I'd like to begin by congratulating Doug and his team. This National Recognition for Achievements and Parked Recognition. The Gold Medal Award places the Town of Keri in the elite of the elite. Every bit is equivalent to the AAA Bond rating, being known as one of the safest, if not the safest, city or community in America. Our ISO 1 rating for the fire department, and so on, so on. It's really that big of a deal. And just like every accolade we receive, while it gets tagged to one particular department, this award, in fact, really all of them, are truly a town award made possible by the efforts of every department, along with the support of the council and the citizenry and the citizenry over many, many years. So, congratulations, Doug.
Thank you, Sean. I first want to say, I thought we won the award back in October, it was the highlight of my year, but that was even more when Judy was selected for Employee of the Year. I've worked with Judy for years, can't think of another person, staff person, more deserving. And if you see her in action with our inclusion program, it's pretty incredible, and so it's wonderful. Anyways, but let me proceed. Standing next to me is Michelle Wells, Executive Director for the North Carolina Recreation and Parks Association. And I'll talk about the staff that are behind me, but first I want to say that the Gold Medal Award is the highest honor a community can receive in the field of parks and recreation. And while the award is granted by the National Parks and Recreation Association, it is truly a recognition of the efforts of countless people. This award belongs to the entire community, the citizens, the council, and staff. What we have accomplished over the past 20 years is a result of comprehensive planning, facility management, programming, and day-to-day operations. And if it takes a village to raise a child, it certainly takes a town to develop the best park system in the country. To back this up, we have asked several staff to attend with us, they're standing behind me, that contribute day-to-day, day in and day out, to making Keri an award-winning community. I want to introduce Jimmy Simpson, Facilities Work Expediter for Public Works, and probably one of the best turf guys in the country. When you go to Wake Med or USA Baseball, he has incredible staff with him and has made our venues what they are. I want to introduce Joe Godfrey, Landscape Architect... Sorry, Joe. I should have put these in order, but... We're the Transportation Facilities Department, who is responsible probably for the majority of our greenways. Marie McGuire, Public Information Specialist. She has the honor of doing many news releases monthly for us for the number of events that we provide, and we couldn't do it without her. Lieutenant Rick Glancy... There he goes. Thank you. I won't turn around, you guys wave. And then we'll get this thing sooner. Rick handles all of our special events at our venues and downtown, things like that. Sue Bentley, Accountant with the Finance Department, who keeps our staff, and particularly me, out of trouble, and God bless her. And last but not least, Gail Taylor, Administrative Specialist for Parks Department, Parks Recreation and Cultural Resource Department, and celebrating her 30th year with the town, and she is the embodiment of customer service and all that is good about the town. The fact of the matter is, in speaking about these staff and others, is the space behind me could be filled up with countless more staff, all of which have contributed to this award on behalf of the Parks Recreation and Cultural Resource Department. And I wanted to thank my fellow directors and all of their staff for their efforts towards the development of the town's park systems, its programs, and services. And now, we could, Michelle Wells can come up, maybe Sean and the mayor can come down to accept the award.
On behalf of the North Carolina Recreation and Park Association, the National Recreation and Park Association, and the American Academy of Park and Recreation Administration, it is my honor to be here tonight to represent the field of parks and recreation. In my role as Executive Director, I get to work with hundreds of parks and recreation professionals from around our state and the nation. I witness fantastic programming and staff in action, and I see incredible facilities and parks, and I can honestly say that Keri is second to none. Your reputation is one of excellence, at the highest level, and a strong commitment to the pillars of conservation, health and wellness, and social equity. For long-range planning, resource management, and volunteerism, to environmental stewardship, programming, and professional staff development, Keri sets the benchmark that other communities look to. With many miles of greenway, nearly three dozen parks, major world-class athletic facilities, championships, festivals, endless classes in camps, thousands of volunteer hours, committed and engaged staff, and an impact on the community that is simply immeasurable, Keri hits the mark in all of these areas. Very few departments or park districts win this award the first time they apply. But with a list like that, it comes as no surprise that the award is here in Keri. Simply put, this award means you are the best in the nation. And I am proud to present the Town of Keri with the National Gold Medal Award for Excellence in the Field of Parks and Recreation Management. Congratulations.
Thank you so much, Michelle. And I'm proud to accept this on behalf of the council, the excellent staff we have, and the 157,000 people that call Keri home, and enjoy all the parks and the infrastructure and the programs that we have here in town. We are so fortunate to be in a community where we have people so committed to excellence and making sure we have the best of resources that we need to be excellent, and that are committed to improving and creating an extraordinary quality of life. And I think that's what our Parks and Recreation Department has done in receiving this award just recognizes the great work that we've done. So, I'm very proud to accept this on behalf of the town. And Mr. Steigl, you have anything you would like to add?
I do. I told Doug last night that he needed to walk into the council chambers tonight with a little swagger. I think he's done that, so I'm proud of him. I'm proud of the rest of them.
Congratulations. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, if I could, I didn't know until tonight, I heard this gold medal thing, and you and I were talking about it, and we didn't realize, I didn't realize it really until tonight, that, you know, you get awards like, it's a gold medal. Well, I didn't know that there was only one gold medal in our town size given out. I thought like a community of excellence, park of excellence was what it was, but just like the Olympics, there was only one gold medal.
That's right. Best of the best, number one in the nation, so we're very proud of that. Thank you, Ken, for pointing that out and making that clear. Okay, we'll move to our next item, and once again, we'll call him Mr. Steigl.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Keeping you busy.
Yeah, with this, you know, with items like this, I like it. Mr. Mayor and council, I only have one item tonight, and that item represents a continuation of the theme regarding the caliber of the employees whom serve this fine community. As such, I'd like to ask our Chief Information Officer, Nicole Mondo, to come to the podium. Nicole? There she is. One has to be with the town at least two years to be eligible for the Employee of the Year award. But Nicole is an example of the kind of outstanding work that's done every day by employees who've been here only a short amount of time. As the council is aware, the Town of Keri is in the beginning stages of what could only be considered a technological revolution that will result in significant service enhancements for our citizens in the months and years to come. Nicole is leading those efforts. The North Carolina Technology Association has named Nicole the Public Sector CIO of the Year, a very prestigious honor and quite remarkable, considering that Nicole came to Keri only 16 months ago. Congratulations, Nicole, and thank you for choosing to give your talent and energy to Keri.
Thank you. I want to thank you all for selecting me. I come in every day, and I absolutely love my job, and I love working with everyone here. However, I am going to bow out gratefully because half of my team is down the street, and they're in a hacking event, and I need to go.
Thank you, Nicole, for all you've done and are going to continue to do. We're real excited about the changes, and for those of you that don't know, the next exciting change is the website at the end of the month should go live, and you've got to check that out. If you didn't like the last one, I understand. I didn't like it that much either. If you didn't like the last one, I understand, I didn't like it that much either, but this one's going to be outstanding, it's a massive change, and I thank you for that, and I want to invite everybody to take a look. So, thank you for all you're doing. Okay, any more recognitions and reports? We're going to move to our next item, is Public Speaks Out. We've included instructions for speaking at this forum on the printed agenda. If you'd like to speak, please take a seat in the rows to my right that are shown as reserved, and follow the instructions on the agenda. Public Speaks Out speakers have three minutes for their comments, and speakers may speak on any topic, as long as it's not a public hearing. As I said, there's a three-minute time limit, we will enforce that time limit to be fair to all of our speakers, and there is a one-hour time limit for all of Public Speaks Out. There's a timer located on the podium, and when the green light turns yellow, that means you have 30 seconds remaining, and when the yellow light turns into a flashing red light, that means your time has expired. And at that point, I will immediately interrupt you and ask you to immediately conclude your comments, trying to be fair to all our speakers, not trying to be rude. We also ask that if you're here with a group, please have a spokesperson speak on behalf of the group to reduce repetitive comments. I thank everyone in the audience for understanding and respecting that this is a business meeting, please do not applaud, or make remarks from your seats, or anything else that might distract from this meeting. As a reminder, for anyone who would like to give input on the fiscal year 2018 budget, at the beginning of the meeting, we added this as a public hearing, so if you wait, you'll have two more minutes to speak. So, now's the time for Public Speaks Out, and I would invite our first speaker forward. Anyone here to speak for Public Speaks Out?
Good evening. My name is Mark Lemire, I'm with the Hollybrook Homeowners Association, I'm joined here with my son Bryce, who wanted to come up with me, so, hope that's okay. I was supposed to be joined with Sandy Inkrodt, Inkrodt, sorry, she's the managing member of the Hollybrook Sewer LLC. Unfortunately, she had a last-minute cancel, or a last-minute emergency at work and wasn't able to make it, but I stand representing both of our interests here tonight. So, on behalf of the Hollybrook Homeowners Association, the board, as well as the LLC, we wanted to thank you all for everything that you guys have done to help our neighborhood. We're really looking forward to this, we're all working together very well. Jared Buchanan, I don't know where he is here, but big shout-out to him, he has been absolutely phenomenal, gone above and beyond, going into things and helping us sort this whole thing out. It's been, his help has been instrumental, and we're very much looking forward to getting this done, and I just, again, want to say thank you, and show our support.
Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Jennifer Zigman.
Can I get you to move to your right?
Sure.
Thank you.
I'm Jennifer Zigman, and I live in Cameron Pond, I've lived here for about a year and a half, this is my son Brooks, and my son Bryce and Jaden are at home this evening, with our dog Buxton, and my husband. So, I'm here to just put into your heads to start thinking about the park that was initially supposed to be put near Cameron Pond after Carpenter Fire Station Road. So, I understand that it was on the budget, and I just wanted to make sure that you understood that it was a conversation that was happening within our community, and we are looking forward to parks. I moved here about a year and a half ago, and one of the deciding factors to bring our family from Southern California, the beaches there, to Cary, North Carolina, was that Town of Cary. It's a fantastic community, my two sons play baseball, USA Baseball's fantastic, and I did not know it was up for a gold award, so that's even better, but, and it's proved well, it's been a great community. But that, and not having a bike path that connects to Cameron Pond, has been a challenge for our family to get out and enjoy the activities. So, I know it's on the agenda to look at that in the budget planning for next year, and it sounds like you have some extra funds available, and I would just love to have you at least consider putting in that part that has been proposed, or at least starting to look at it, and the trail connecting to Cameron Pond. That's it, thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. Mayor, City Council, it's honor to be here, and thanks for your time. I can't forget about different topics tonight. I own property in Cary, and I want to address the issue and question I have, that the city policy on the privacy law. My question number one is, does the city policy allow the private, the city employee inspector to send out the housing report to the homeowner, private mortgage bank, and the other third-party non-ditiate? If the answer to the question number one is no, then my question number two is, which property will the city and the city council have to do under such action? If answer to question number one is yes, then my third question is, which general state you authorize such action? And my question number four is, if the report can be sent to anyone, how can the citizen get a copy of housing inspection report on the other property? I'd like to share my experience as the following. I moved here 20 years ago, and I own property in Cary. My property is in good condition. However, I have some issue with my current tenant, and because she bought several days or 10, she's moved in September. On November 2016, I got message from the city inspector, 13 days before he come to my property for inspection. Inspector told me that my tenant complained that there's gas leak, and I install gas pay will not permit. Both claims were false. I told inspector I have issue with the tenant, and the gas pay was installed in 2004, and I bought house in 2010. I told inspector that, the inspector told me, "Don't worry, if I can install gas pack, then I need to worry." Inspector asked me to do something on the house, because I was not informed of the inspection, neither I would give the time to investigate the matter. So, he said he would go and give me a time, as much time as possible. We're not any meeting. Inspector told me he would send the copy of inspection report to my mortgage bank and third-party. I object to it, because tenant, landlord issue, and inspection report are private. It's not into the Windsor Bank. However, on November 23, 2016, I got report, and also sent to my, the documents shows that inspection report was sent to my mortgage bank and the other non-ditiate third-party. My property has working heater, running water, and all the necessity stuff every house has. And for the house, what color is unattable by the inspector, which is not true. So, my question number five is, what's a city town, Cary town, criteria in colorize?
I'm sorry, but I have to interrupt you.
Okay.
Time has expired.
Okay.
I can tell you that your issues seem to be with operations, and the town manager, if he has your contact information, can have someone contact you and get you answers to all of your questions.
Yes, my question, no, they can email me the spot, because this is a policy issue. This is a policy issue.
Well, if it's a policy issue, he can bring it to us, okay? Thank you.
Okay, all right, thank you. Thank you for your time.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Jason Barron with Morningstar Law Group, here to address you all on item 6.1 on your agenda, the Mills Resoning Case 16, REZ 17. As you all know, we have been working on supplemental conditions for that case to address issues that the council has raised with respect to creating a sense of place for this community. When you all last saw the case, there were essentially two conditions associated with it, even though we had talked about other conditions, there were two zoning conditions applicable the last time you saw it, and that was one, limiting it to 40 detached residential units or townhomes, and the second was requiring a Type A buffer and privacy fence along the southern edge of the property adjacent to the Upchurch Farm. Since that time, we have added a total of six conditions that I will do my best to run through in the three minutes, designed to address architecture, open space, and a variety of other things. New condition number three is prior to any request for issuance of the sixth certificate of occupancy, that a pedestrian connection from the property will be provided to either the parcel to the north, which is Green Hope High School, or the parcel to the east. If you recall, we had talked about providing a pedestrian connection to the parcel to the east, to provide pedestrian connectivity to the tennis park, and as Councilor Bush pointed out, I wasn't really sure if that connection would be feasible, we might provide an option, and so what that condition says, at the time of site plan, will determine where that connection would go. Condition four is that there should be no more than five dwelling units per townhouse building to be constructed upon the subject property. We had a conversation before you all the last time we talked about this case, and had revised some language to address a comment that Mr. George had made. Condition five, at the time of site or subdivision plan review, architectural elevations will be submitted for the front elevations to demonstrate that each dwelling unit shall use one or more of the following to complement: the horizontal fiber cement siding that will comprise the primary exterior material, brick, wood, stone, fiber cement, shake, or board and batten. There shall be no vinyl siding, however vinyl windows, decorative elements, and trim elements are permitted. Dwelling unit entrances that face the street must have a covered porch or stoop. No garage shall protrude more than one foot out from the front facade or front porch of the dwelling unit which is apart. Garage doors facing a street shall be compatible with the siding or trim of the colors of the associated dwelling unit. New condition number six, at the time of site or subdivision plan review, architectural elevations will be submitted for the proposed townhomes that addresses a street. To demonstrate compliance with the following requirements, the roof for each townhouse unit will, shall be pitched at 5 to 12 or greater. Townhome roofline shall not be a single mass and must be broken up horizontally and vertically, I'm going to do my best, but I'm going to run out of time. Exterior colors shall vary, each dwelling unit and townhouse shall have a minimum of six windows, there's also front facade treatments. Before I run out of time, obviously, I've got 13 seconds, there's also an increase in the code-required community gathering space, the code requires 1,200 square feet, we've increased that to 2,000 square feet, which is a 67% increase about what the code require, and finally, two car garages. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barron. Next speaker, please.
I'm representing, Katie told me I had five minutes? Because I'm having 20 people?
Only three minutes.
Okay. Hi, Jeff Alsberg, I live at 603 Ryan, I'm discussing the Ryan Road senior.
You're here for the public hearing.
Public hearings are coming.
Oh, the public hearing?
Yep, you will get five minutes at the public hearing, we're still at Public Speaks Out.
My bad.
Oh, no problem, we still have your handout, so we'll call you up first.
Perfect.
Who do you think, Mr. Mayor and Council? Congratulations on getting your award, that's beautiful. My name is Dr. Willem Van Eck, I am a Emeritus Professor of the University of West Virginia. My field is earth science and forestry. I went to see the planning department the other day, and talked to Gail Taylor, and asked if it would be fine if my wife's memory, she died five years ago, could be honored by having a tree planted on the corner of Cary Parkway and Kildare Farm Road. She told me, "Well, there was a committee for that, but there wasn't an active committee." She said tonight's council meeting would bring that up, and so I came here partly to hear if the council discussion on tree planting, and memorial trees, or legacy trees, whatever you get to call them. And so, I would like to ask your understanding for people like myself, who like to honor the memory of a person, but particularly our tremendous pleasure of having lived in Cary since 1990, having been a member of the, in fact, my first task here was to be a member of the Cary Planning Board in the early 90s, and then a member of the Board of Kildare Farm Association. And I have lived in that area now for the last 26 years. It's been a great pleasure, unforgettable truly, for us basically paradise on earth. But I'd like to see you do something with the tree, heritage trees. First of all, in my role as a forester, I would love to see our trees that we have better recognized and honored than we do. In other words, we should have a legacy program, we do so in Raleigh, through my Raleigh Rotary Club, and I hope that maybe some Rotary Club in Cary might sponsor this program. We do recognize trees that are unique in the landscape. Now, of course, the trees in Kildare Farm, as you well know, on the corner of Cary Parkway and Kildare Farm Road are precious, and I hope that you pay some attention to the trees we have, rather than maybe future trees that we haven't yet, haven't gotten yet. I'd like to plant one that won't take at least 100 years to be what the others look like. So, in the honor of Dr. Nari Van Eck, who died in 2011, I'd like to think of you reforming the committee that you used to have. Gail told me that you did have a committee on trees, on legacy trees, I hope you reconstitute that. My planning director, Vashlenda Toppak, in the old days, she may still be around.
Thank you.
To help recreate some old memories, and so, all I'm here for is to just say, please go ahead with your recognition of trees.
Thank you.
Legacy trees, and also perhaps some role that I might play in helping you with that.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Van Eck. I do know that we plant trees and memories of others on Arbor Day, not sure of our policy, so I would ask that Mr. Stiegel not only contact Mr. Van Eck, but contact the rest of the council, so that we're all clear on the policy that we do have with the town.
And what we can do with that.
Right.
Good evening. Thank you Mayor Weinbeck and the Town Council for the opportunity to speak this evening. My name is Maria Servanya, and I am a resident at 102 Domuth Court in the Berkeley subdivision. This evening, I am speaking in behalf of the Berkeley Homeowners Association, and it is to urge the council and the mayor to support the staff's recommendations, particularly item six on the intersection improvement project, which is the details that are highlighting improvements for the High House Road corridor in our area. As I've been here many times before, concerned about the traffic in my area, particularly at Sir Walker and Cranbourne and High House Road, we've come as a neighborhood, and with the surrounding neighborhoods, to express our concern and desire for solutions in that area. We often hear, and you probably often hear us say, "We want a light," but we know, in working with your staff, and with you all, that sometimes solutions are not exactly what the residents can have. But I am happy to say, with the process that we went through with your town, and learning, with our town, and learning the process of voicing our opinions, and hearing what the possibilities were, and also to the process of, that was led by Amir Azarati, I hope I didn't maul his name, and the SEPI group during the summer, it was a wonderful opportunity for our neighbors to actually provide input on, and see what the opportunities can be. for our neighbors to actually provide input and see what the opportunities can be. So particularly, our problem is U-turns at that intersection. And it's probably due to the fact that there is a block at Weddington Road that was created during a previous year prior that prohibited the Wellesley residents to turn left into Weddington. So in the recommendations that have been proposed by staff, wonderfully, that they are proposing an opening in that area. So we are elated by that because we know it's going to significantly improve the situation there, where it'll minimize the U-turns in our direct intersection. So we very much urge you to approve the recommendations. But along with that, we know that there's going to be the Mills rezoning, which didn't trigger, again, another traffic study. We know other things will be developing in the area. And with Ashburn already breaking ground, this is only the start, and this is not the first time we're going to come back and say we're going to need another solution. But we want to say we are very happy with what the progress has so far, and please, please, we urge you to at least make this first step to make that improvement. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Anyone else to speak at Public Speaks Out? Seeing no one will close, Public Speaks Out. We move to our next item on the agenda, which is the consent agenda. And for the benefit of people watching on TV, I'm going to take a moment to review our consent agenda items. One vote approves all of these items. On the consent agenda, we have minutes, approval of resolution to designate applicant's agent, rescoping fiscal year 2017 capital funding from softball complex at Thomas Brooks Parks to National Training Complex, approval of amendment to Carolina FC sublease for use of Wake Med South Park, approval of proposed 2017 meeting schedule, 2016 board appointments to zoning board of adjustment, which is ZBOA, extraterritorial jurisdiction position and environmental advisory board vacant position, condemnation resolution to secure necessary easements for the Hollybrook Water Extension Project, requests for additional traffic Schedule 8 prohibited parking at all times on Reedy Creek, Old Reedy Creek Road, acceptance of Duke Energy Grant for electric vehicle charging station, finalizing the closure of portion of Wilson Road, condemnation resolution to secure rights of way and easements for Marsville Parkway Extension and NC 540 interchain project ST 1123, 16 RZ 6718 Holly Springs Road rezoning inconsistency statement. And before we take action on the consent agenda, I would like to comment on the closure portion of Wilson Road. The Town Marsville Council considered the Wilson Road closure at their November 22 regular scheduled meeting. In response to feedback from Woods at Fairbanks residents, and as an option to reduce and mitigate the effect of the road closing on surrounding residents, CalAtlantic has proposed the following plan: Wilson Road will be kept open as a private road for four months, January through May, after Cary-Marsville closure orders are approved, and then close it to finish site infrastructure for their new subdivision. Thus, instead of the eight-month closure as originally envisioned, it will likely be a four-month closure instead. The Marsville Council will take final action on the closure at their December 13 meeting. Having said all of that and all of those, would council members like any of those items pulled from the consent agenda for discussion? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Someone?
There's a motion.
Second.
And the second. Discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We now move to public hearings. Same rules apply for public hearings that apply for Public Speaks Out with one exception. Instead of three minutes for your comments, you now have five minutes for your comments. Our first public hearing was added at the beginning of our meeting, and it's the fiscal year 2018 budget input. Speakers have the opportunity to share their priorities for the upcoming budget. No action is required from the council this evening, and at this time, I'll open that public hearing and invite our first speaker forward. Anyone to speak at this public hearing? Seeing no one will close that public hearing, and open it up to council members for questions or comments. Okay, moving to our second public hearing. It is 5.216A15, Boss Construction Company Annexation. Mr. Nicholas of our staff will introduce this item. Council will take action on this item at a future meeting. Mr. Nicholas.
Thank you. Good evening, Council. This request is for annexation of a .62 acre portion of the property located at 10108 Penny Road, approximately 600 feet northwest of the Penny Road and Brookridge Drive intersection. The property is located within Cary's ETJ and is adjacent to the existing corporate limits. It's currently zoned R40. This request is associated with a proposed rezoning, and that public hearing was held on November 10. That concludes the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Nicholas. Now's the time for the public hearing for Item 5.216A15, Boss Construction Company Annexation. And I will call the first speaker forward. Anyone to speak at this public hearing? Seeing no one will close the public hearing, open it up to council members for questions or comments. Nope. All right, moving to our next public hearing, 5.3. It is 16A18, Petra Pursuer Annexation. Mr. Nicholas will once again introduce the item. Council will take action on this item this evening. Mr. Nicholas.
Thank you. This next request is for annexation of 16.41 acres located at 2421 High House Road, approximately 370 feet east of the intersection with NC 55 Highway. The annexation will also include 3.37 acres of adjacent right-of-way. Property is located in Cary's ETJ. It's adjacent to the existing corporate limits. It's currently zoned residential eight conditional use. Request is associated with a subdivision plan that proposes a total of 25 lots for detached dwellings. That concludes the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Nicholas. Now's the time for public hearing, Item 5.316A18, Petra Pursuer Annexation, and I would invite our first speaker forward.
Mayor and Council, Tom Beebe with CalAtlantic. For the sake of time, I'm not going to have any remarks. If you've got -- I'm here for questions if you have any. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Beebe. Anyone else to speak at this public hearing? Seeing no one will close the public hearing. Council members have any questions or comments?
No.
Okay. Is there a motion?
I move that we approve annexation petition 16A18. Second.
There's a motion and a second. Discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We move to our next public hearing, Item 5.416A20, Kathleen Herndon, revocable trust annexation. Mr. Nicholas will once again introduce this item, and council will take action at a future meeting. Mr. Nicholas.
Thank you. This next request is for annexation of two properties totaling approximately eight acres. Properties are located on Louis Drive in the northeast quadrant of the NC 55 Highway and Louis Drive intersection. The annexation will also include 2.76 acres of adjacent right-of-way. Properties are located outside of Cary's ETJ, however they are adjacent to the existing corporate limits. Properties currently have a Wake County zoning designation of Highway District. Request is associated with a proposed rezoning, and that public hearing is tentatively scheduled for a council meeting in February of 2017.
Thank you, Mr. Nicholas. Now's the time for the public hearing for annexation 16A20, and I would invite our first speaker forward. Anyone to speak at this public hearing? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing and ask council members if they have any questions or comments. Otherwise, this goes to a future meeting. Okay, moving to our next two items. Item 5.5 and 5.6, which is an annexation and a rezoning. The annexation is 16A19, Tompkins, Moss, and Lithsentium Annexation. And Item 5.616RZ29, Old White Oak Church Road Assemblage rezoning. We're going to hear both staff reports, allow the applicant to explain the rezoning request, conduct a public hearing. Council will not take action tonight. Both items will come back to us at a future date and a recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Board. Ms. Granon of our staff will introduce this item. Ms. Granon.
Thank you, Council. This is a request for rezoning and annexation for four parcels located on Old White Oak Church Road. The area is approximately 10.6 acres, highlighted here in yellow on the north side of Old White Oak Church Road. The aerial view of the subject property shows that it is wooded and developed with three single-family detached residential dwellings. As mentioned, there is an associated annexation petition. The property is currently in Wake County, and the annexation must come in conjunction with the rezoning request because we can't apply zoning unless it's in our jurisdiction. The site is slightly impacted, according to our GIS maps, by a stream buffer. Field determination of such features will be made at the time of development plan review. There is the American Tobacco Trail in very close proximity to the site, and this also shows the location of future greenway trails in the vicinity. And this shows the proximity of a future collector road adjacent to the subject property. The land use plan designation is very low-density residential. This is within the proposed conservation residential overlay district. The existing zoning, as I mentioned, is Wake County, R40W. The proposed zoning would be residential 40 conditional use. The applicant has also asked for the conservation residential overlay district, and then there would be the application of the watershed protection overlay district, Jordan Lake Subdistrict, if this comes into Cary's jurisdiction. Conditions proposed by the applicant would be to limit the use to detached residential and neighborhood recreation. This shows you the location of property owners in the vicinity who received written notification of the request, and the property was posted as well. There was a neighborhood meeting on November 2. Concerns expressed by adjacent property owners were the product type, buffers, development schedule. There was discussion about items which could not be included as zoning conditions, such as the price of the homes, who the builder would be, and as you know, and for the sake of the viewing audience, the cost of a home is not something that a builder can offer as a zoning condition. This concludes staff's presentation. Following the applicant's comments in the public hearing will be available for your questions.
Thank you, Ms. Granon. It's time I'll invite the applicant forward for their comments. Is the applicant here?
No.
I guess not. Okay. We'll go ahead and open up the public hearing for this annexation, 16A19, and the rezoning, 16RZ29, and I would invite our first speaker forward. Anyone to speak at this public hearing? Seeing no one will close the public hearing, open it up to council members for questions or comments.
Not at this time.
Not at this time. We'll defer action on these items until a later date and after our Planning and Zoning Board has reviewed it and made their recommendation. Thank you, Ms. Granon. We'll now move to the next two items. Another, this is a CPA, Comprehensive Plan Amendment, and a rezoning. It's 16CPA07 Cary Parkway at Wellington Comprehensive Plan Amendment, and 16RZ30 Cary Parkway at Wellington. We're going to hear both staff reports, allow the applicant to explain the request, conduct a public hearing. Council will not take action tonight. Instead, we're going to refer both of these to the Planning and Zoning Board to get their recommendation. Both items will come back to us at a future date. Introducing this item is Mr. Ravich.
Good evening. This is a request to amend the comprehensive plan for about 3.7 acres of land off of the interchange of US Highway 164 and southeast Cary Parkway. This is an aerial photograph of the site. You can see it's on the southeast quadrant of the interchange. It's adjacent to a Duke Progress power easement. You can see that power easement clearing running diagonally through the site. Notification for tonight's public hearing was sent to all properties shown in yellow on this map. The site is immediately adjacent to a rather large floodplain and stream buffer area, the width of which can range from 400 to 600 feet adjacent to the site, so a portion of the eastern edge of the property is encumbered by that. The Parks and Recreation Master Plan, this site is immediately adjacent to the town's property from Marla Durrell Park. It's also proximate, you can see the green lines there for the Hinshaw Greenway and for the Piney Plains Greenway, both immediately proximate to the site. According to the town's transportation plan, southeast Cary Parkway is supposed to be a four-lane median-divided facility. It's already fully improved to its ultimate cross-section, so there would be no further changes in that regard. In terms of transit facilities and services in the area, the only fixed route bus service today in the area is provided by Go Triangle. It's provided along Tryon Road, about a quarter mile south of the site. The town's long-range transit expansion plans do envision someday Go Cary service along Cary Parkway, along the frontage in front of the site. Today, the long-range land use recommendations for this area are given by Cary's Southeast Area Plan. You can see the site outlined in the yellow boundary here. Most of the site has been recommended for future commercial uses. It matches the base zoning, and that's the reason for the commercial designation. A small portion of the site is also designated for parks and open space because that eastern edge of the site is in floodplain. The case applicants are requesting that the base land use designation be changed to office and light industrial uses instead of commercial. They've also asked that the property be taken out of the Wellington Mixed Use Community Activity Center. Should've said on the prior side, the site is also part of the Wellington Mixed Use Community Activity Center. So you can see the bold blue boundary, which is the outline of the center, would be, under the applicant's request, would be taken off of the property. We would like to point out that the new comprehensive plan for the town of Cary is currently under review by council and the planning board. It will have its second public hearing on December 19 before the board and come to the council for action in late January. Just to tell you what that plan calls for, there's a change in the area, no longer calling for the area to be part of a large targeted mixed-use center, but the whole quadrant is recommended for what's called a business industrial park. And as that plan moves forward, we'll keep you apprised. Should the comprehensive, the new community plan be adopted prior to action on this CPA, the CPA case just goes away. There'll be no need to amend the old plan when this plan is adopted, so this may or may not come back to you. It's a plan amendment. However, under the current plan that we are working with, there are four standards, criteria for reviewing comprehensive plan amendment. Two of those are relevant here. The second criteria talks about new issues or opportunities, and one of the big issues that the Imagine Cary process tried to address is the ever-decreasing supply of land for business and employment uses in Cary. And the third criteria is, is there a change in the town policies? Well, that is currently underway because all of the Cary community plan is about fully updating the town's policies, so that is subject to change. And with that, I will turn the presentation over to Deborah Granon, who will describe the associated rezoning.
Deborah?
Sorry, over to Mary Beerman. I'm so used to seeing Deborah up here. It's Mary Beerman who will present the rezoning.
People confuse us all the time. Good evening, Council. So now we'll move on to the rezoning portion of this request. The existing zoning for the site is split. A portion of it that you see in the red is zoned general commercial conditional use, and then there's a small area that's zoned R40. The request does involve a portion of two different lots, and I would point out that we do have a subdivision plan that's currently in process that would reconfigure the area to create a single lot with the boundary that you have shown in yellow. And also, as part of that, there would be a public road created that would extend from southeast Cary or Parkway up to the site, so that that road access would be provided as part of that subdivision. The proposed zoning for the site is industrial conditional use, and also removal of the mixed-use overlay district that goes in concert with the community activity center that is in place now. The proposed zoning conditions would limit land use to mini-storage, outdoor storage, and accessory uses that could go with those uses. I would point out here that the industrial zoning district is the only district that allows mini-storage use, which is why it's industrial conditional use that is requested. And also, the miniStorage use is not allowed in a mixed-use overlay district, which is why the removal of the mixed-use overlay district is requested. Currently, there are a number of land uses allowed on the site that are specified with the zoning conditions on the commercial the zoning conditions on the commercial, the general commercial portion of the property that were approved in 1987 as part of a conditional zoning use case there. The uses that are allowed on the site now are listed, listed here, and it is a range of commercial uses that are specifically allowed there now and currently. Those are the only uses allowed now. If the proposed zoning is approved, then the only uses that would be allowed would be the mini-storage, outdoor storage, and those accessory uses. At the neighborhood meeting that was conducted for this request, there were eight area residents that attended the meeting, and there were a number of questions shown here, questions related to access, a number of questions related to the building design, hours of operation, security, variety of those questions. In response, the applicant did go into some detail to describe some of the specific aspects of the intended design and operation of the use. However, I would point out that those details are not reflected in actual zoning conditions. And also, since that neighborhood meeting, staff did receive an email from a citizen expressing some concern with the proximity of the request to the Marla Darrell Park next door. That concludes staff's comments. Following the applicant comments and the public hearing will be available for questions.
Thank you, Ms. Beerman. At this time, I would invite the applicant forward for their comments.
Good evening again, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Jason Barron. Here on behalf of the applicant, I'm working with Stein Investment Group on this site. Stein was the applicant on a case that you all heard earlier this year for a similar use located in the Maynard Crossing Court area, near the intersection of High House Road and Maynard. And their intent for this particular property is to do something very similar to what has been approved, that you all approved unanimously for that particular site. I'll hit the land use plan and then the zoning. On the land use plan front, as was mentioned by Scott during his presentation, it's really a timing issue for this, for a use of this type. The land use plan, assuming that the community, the Cary community plan gets adopted in January, or February for that matter, because we'll be in the hopper for a few months, the land use plan amendment that we have requested will be mooted because the office and industrial, the industrial use that we're asking for on the site will then be consistent with what the Cary community plan is calling for. With respect to the zoning, again, the purpose is to do on the site what I would call a 21st century-style mini-storage facility. And I'll explain a little bit about how this site relates to the area that it's located. I represent the potential builder of the site. As I understand it, the owners of this site essentially own the entirety of this quadrant, the entire quadrant. This is a portion of two properties, but it's unified ownership for all of those sites. As I understand it, they are under contract with a single developer who intends to develop the entirety of this quadrant for a variety of uses, some of which are currently permitted by the existing zoning. And so in conversations with, between my client and that single developer, the understanding is the developer believes this use will be complementary to the uses that they're developing on the balance of the site. And one advantage of a use of this type, as you all are aware, as you've heard in other cases related to mini-storage facilities, you know, they're generally quiet uses. You know, they're being developed as multi-story facilities, so you've got kind of, you know, an architectural feel and look that's a little bit more appealing than has typically been the case. And additionally, they're also very low-traffic generators. And so I think as this case continues to evolve, as I understand it from the developer, there was a site plan that was submitted earlier today for a portion of the site, and there's anticipated to be a site plan submitted for another portion in January. As those pieces come together, I believe that kind of the full picture will be a little bit more clear to you all, to Planning and Zoning Board, as well as the community as a whole. We believe it's a, it's a, it's a use that makes, is very appropriate, given what we understand is going on with the rest of that site, even though we're not necessarily working on all of that. And so with that, you know, we would respectfully request you all's support as we move through the process. Again, we've got a little bit of work to do on our end. We're still kind of fine-tuning what the conditions would look like associated with this case, and also working with the developer, making sure that whatever we do is consistent with what their long-term vision is for this quadrant. And finally, I would ask if the council is inclined to allow this zoning and land use plan amendment to move forward together, rather than having to bifurcate that process. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Barron. Now's time for the public hearing for CPA 16CPA07 and rezoning 16REZ30, and I would invite our first speaker forward. Anyone to speak at this public hearing? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing, and we're going to refer this to, and keep them together, refer this to the Planning and Zoning Board. I just have to tell you, I'm going to throw in my two cents, because I have such strong feelings about it, putting an industrial use of this valuable piece of property, I think, is a bad use. And I, you're going to have a lot of convincing to do to get me to even come close to supporting this. So you have a struggling shopping center that needs redevelopment on one side, to the south and east, and then across the street, you have beautiful office buildings that are very successful and expanding, and I think this will put a wrench in all of that. And I just have a hard time supporting this. I know my colleagues feel differently. I just wanted to make that statement so the applicant knows where I stand, and as they move forward, they can help me come closer to accepting something like this, because I don't like this at all. So, other comments?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, this colleague says well said.
Oh. Other comments?
He said law.
Okay. This will go to the Planning and Zoning Board. We'll see it at a future.
Mayor?
Yes?
Because the applicant asked that they go together, I think we need the council to vote.
Make a motion?
Yes.
Okay. Do I have a motion to send both the CPA and the rezoning together?
So moved.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Motion carries six to one. Thank you. We now move to our next public hearing, item 5.9. It's rezoning 16REZ31 Ryan Spring Residential. We're going to have this item introduced. Council will not take action on this item. Instead, it's going to be referred to the Planning and Zoning Board. Ms. Dry will introduce this item.
Good evening, council. For your consideration, as a request to rezone approximately 1.74 acres at 616 Ryan Road, the property which is highlighted in yellow is just north of Walnut Street. You can see Walnut Street to the south. It is across from the Cary Village Square Shopping Center, adjacent to the Town of Cary Dunham Park. The site is currently vacant. You can see the tennis courts from the Dunham Park to the west here. Again, the Cary Village Square Shopping Center to the east. To the north is the Single Family Subdivision, Iron Gate, and then to the south, you can see the parking for the State Employees Credit Union. The existing zoning for the property is office and institutional. The property is located in a mixed-use overlay district. You can see that line for the mixed-use overlay district here in blue, just to the north of the site. The applicant is proposing to rezone the property to mixed-use district and has submitted a preliminary development plan. The applicant is proposing age-restricted multifamily use. This is a rendering of the preliminary development plan that's been proposed. Just to help orient you with this site, Ryan Road is located just adjacent to the site, to the east. To the north is the Iron Gate subdivision. To the west, this is the Town of Cary Park, and just to the south is the State Employees Credit Union. The mixed-use district is a flexible zoning district that allows property owners to rezone land subject to requirements as established in their preliminary development plan. The applicant sets the standards that are shown on this preliminary development plan. And so for this site, the applicant first submitted this plan with their rezoning application on October 4th. The plan has been reviewed by the Town of Cary Development Review Committee and has gone through multiple revisions prior to the public hearing. The applicant is proposing a four-story residential building. The use proposed is age-restricted multifamily dwellings with a maximum of 42 units. They're also proposing to build a greenway on the northern portion of their site and connect it to the Town of Cary Park to the west. So I have here just another version of their preliminary development plan to illustrate some of the elements of the plan. This is the greenway they're proposing to construct to the north, on the northern portion of their site. They are proposing a 40-foot buffer, which is required, adjacent to the single-family neighborhood to the north. They're also proposing an additional 10-foot buffer for a total of 50 feet and supplemental landscaping in that buffer. They're proposing four gathering areas. They're proposing a greenway easement along the western portion of the property. There's an existing footpath along the back portion of the property that connects to the Town of Cary Park, and they'd like to kind of follow that existing path, so the actual location of the easement will be determined at the time of site plan review. They're proposing a 15-foot streetscape, 52 parking spaces, and 50%, or up to 50% impact to the critical root zone of a champion tree. The champion tree is located not on the property for the subject site, but it's actually located on the property just to the south, and they're requesting to impact up to 50% of the portion of the critical root zone that's on their property. So if you look at this half circle that's on their property, they're proposing to impact up to 50% of that, not 50% of the entire critical root zone. So just to summarize, again, they're asking for multifamily age-restricted use, four-story building, maximum height of 55 feet. They're proposing to increase the buffer width next to the Iron Gate subdivision to 50-foot. They're proposing a greenway easement along the northern and western portion of their site, connecting to the town park and four gathering areas. Because this is a flexible zoning district that they're requesting, this allows them to set their dimensional standards. The applicant is proposing 52 spaces. This is less than the town requirements for parking. However, because they're in a flexible zoning district, or requesting flexible zoning district, they can set their standards. It should be noted that the use will be limited to ages 55 and older, and it is immediately adjacent to a shopping center, town park, all of which could potentially reduce the need for parking. They're also requesting 15-foot streetscape, and again, up to 50% impact of the critical root zone. The land use plan designates the site for office and institutional. However, the site is in a mixed-use overlay district, which allows for a variety of options in land uses. Under the draft Cary Community Plan, which is anticipated to be adopted in early 2017, the rezoning case was evaluated against the plan's growth framework map. And you can see the property is right here. It's located in what's designated as a shopping center and commercial area. The use that's being proposed is consistent with the draft Cary Community Plan. The following plan policies would also apply to this case. It applies to the live policy. It works with providing more housing choices, a variety of housing options in mixed-use centers, supporting residential infill. It works also under the engage policy, which calls for provision of greenways. It also applies under the shape policy, which encourages a mix of uses, infill, and appropriate transitions between land uses. According to the Town of Cary GIS maps, there are no stream buffers indicated on the site. According to the Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Resources Facilities Master Plan, this indicates that the Dunham Park Greenway Connector runs along the northern and western boundary of the subject property. According to the comprehensive transportation plan, Ryan Road is a collector road. There are Go Cary and Go Triangle routes that are nearby to the site, located right here along southeast Maynard Road. There was a neighborhood meeting held on the site on November 2nd here at the town hall, and there were 12 attendees at this meeting. Some of the questions and concerns from neighbors about this rezoning included the proposed height, speed, and traffic along Ryan Road. There was concern about the removal of trees for the use, loss of animal habitat, buffers, and landscaping requirement. There was also some questions about opportunities for traffic calming along Ryan Road as well. So properties within 800 feet of the site were notified of the public hearing. The site was posted and noticed on the town website. So this concludes staff's presentation. The applicant is here to share the request. Following that, staff will be available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I would invite the applicant forward for their remarks.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name is Willie Hood. I'm a landscape architect and land planner, and would like to just take about two minutes to make a couple of bullet points about this proposal. First of all, I'd like to point out that the proposed use is permitted in the mixed-use overlay district, and it is consistent with the existing land use plan and with the Cary Community Plan. There exists a need for this type of housing in Cary, and ideally, housing of this type for age-restricted citizens should be located close to retail and office and parks and other amenities. So this is a very good location. We believe that this proposal is the least impactful to the surrounding neighborhood because other uses that would be allowed here would be retail, office, or traditional multifamily, and would really impact the area more with traffic. And our client has about 900 units in their portfolio, and the average number of parking spaces comes out to .23 per unit. So a lot of these people do not have cars. So we believe that at the neighborhood meeting, traffic was an issue, the building height was an issue, and we think we've addressed the building height with our setbacks and additional buffers and the location of the building on the site. So I'd like to reserve any time I have left if there are any questions.
May I ask you questions later?
Sure.
Thank you. Now's the time for the public hearing. Whoops. There we go. For public hearing, 16REZ31 rezoning, and I would invite the speaker that was here earlier, and he's already back. Thank you for the.
Now I jumped the gun. Sorry, I was chomping at the bit.
No problem.
Ability to get here tonight, and I thought, for some reason, I'd be the first one on the docket. Firstly, it's an honor to speak to you tonight, and Katie's done a wonderful job prepping us for this. I ask tonight that, two things of you effectively. One is that, ask yourself where the closest four-story building is to you, at your house where you live, and is it in a residential neighborhood? Is it the edge of a residential neighborhood, or is it part of a larger commercial area? The second is, you know, if it happens to be on the highest elevation in the whole street, right? So it's going to seem like it's a five-story building. So the buffer concept and the trees buffering it out, to me, doesn't hold a lot of water. And so, you know, what would it be like? You know, this is a place where fox and deer live right now. I was heartened by the gentleman earlier that was talking about the trees, because it's a treat area that would then be taken down with just the buffer areas around the outside, and it certainly would change the desirability, you know, of our houses and the quality of life that we have. But that being said, nobody in the group of neighbors that I'm supporting, and I put them on the list for you, there's over 20 people that, there was 12 at the meeting, and then more that showed up when we had a secondary meeting. Nobody's cold-hearted. We know that the seniors, everybody needs a place to live, and we all have parents, and we're all getting older. But we have a bunch of concerns on a bunch of different levels, and those are focused on safety, security, sound, and light pollution. The location, as you can see from the drawings, is on the only bend of the street there, and we are, you call it a collector, but we're basically a cut-through for Maynard. So we frequently see people doing 40-plus miles an hour on the street there. I requested of the town, and not in this format, but in one phone call, y'all came out and surveyed and put in a crosswalk there, and to this day, I walk my dogs out there. People don't stop for it. We see near misses all the time on Cary, because people speed through there, because it's a straightaway right next to Maynard. So one thing I'd ask you to do is imagine older drivers coming out of there in an area where there's a bend with less visibility and people speeding there. So it's just, to me, I know there was no traffic study done, but it's something that bears consideration, right? Because of the clientele that they're looking to put in the. consideration, right, because of the clientele that they're looking to put in the place there. Today, there's a steady stream of teenagers because of the proximity to the high school that go back there, and it's a known spot where I've provided pictures in there. There was a tent there all summer long. I wish the leaves, you know, the leaves cover up almost all the trash that's out there, but it's always littered with trash and beer bottles and all sorts of other items there. To me, and there was this summer, I'm not sure if you're aware, but there was an arrest there of people that were robbing teenagers. We feel like the senior citizens in there are going to be easy targets for, in terms of, from a crime standpoint, from a security standpoint. And I guess I'd ask you again, I ask you to imagine having a four or five, what looks like a five-story building right across the street from your house, which I live right across the street, Linda's here, lives right next door to it, fully lit parking lot. To us, that's light pollution, right? This used to be a forest area with fox and deer, and now it's got a lit parking lot, and also twenty-four-seven opportunity for emergency vehicles with the elderly in there. So that's obviously sound pollution. That's going to be something that disrupts our lives and our quality of life there as From, and this affects more the people on Mayalden, but imagine the privacy of now having a four- or five-story building that's right now looking over your house, looking into your backyard. Would you leave your drapes open, right? Would you feel the same having a barbecue in your backyard, right? It's now changed the dynamic of these people's lives, right? And so that's, I'd ask you to consider yourself being in that position and what that does to the privacy. We were told by the developer to expect zero impact on our property values, but who really believes that if you put this in there that it's not going to change the property values? And that's something that, I'm not trying to lean on that fully, and everybody was, you know, everybody's concerned about that. It's not our cornerstone, but at the end of the day, it's just hard to believe that that would be something that wouldn't be impacted. And speaking of being a commercial building, we haven't seen any three-D drawings of it, so we have no idea what it's going to look like, right? We have no idea what it's going to look like at all. There was no environmental study done, and none was required, but my house and the house next to me floods, and if that area is paved over, I think there's more of an opportunity for flooding in our houses.
I'm sorry, I'm going to have to interrupt you. Your time has expired.
Five minutes? That was five minutes?
That was five minutes. Wow. We have your hand out, though. We appreciate that.
Okay.
If you have additional comments, if you leave them with the clerks, she'll make sure we have a copy of them.
Okay.
Five minutes. That's quick. Thank you, sir. Next speaker for this public hearing. Anyone else for this public hearing? Seeing no one will close the public hearing, I have several questions and then some comments, and then I'll turn it over to my colleagues. So we have an expert right here, basically across the street from his house. The rendering that was provided, they're not held to any of that drawing except for the items you listed earlier. Is that correct? Could they orientate that building somewhere else, or are they required to put that building as it was in the rendering?
It could probably shift slightly.
Could it go up next to the neighbors? Could it go somewhere else?
It couldn't go any closer to the neighbors because they're proposing a fifty-foot buffer adjacent to the neighbors, so. And I believe it's sixty, about sixty feet, a little bit more than sixty feet right now off of the property line.
So they gave height restrictions. Did they give units?
Yeah, maximum of forty-two units.
Forty-two units, okay. And then the current zoning, what is the height allowed now? Worst-case scenario.
It depends based on the proximity to the residential, so I don't know off the top of my head. I'm looking.
Reinforcements? Here comes Ms. Granite.
If they're within a hundred feet of the residential zoning district, they'd have a maximum of thirty-five feet. If it's greater than a hundred feet, it would be a maximum of fifty feet, but, and then opportunity to increase one foot for every additional foot that it's setback. Once again, though, it is in a mixed-use overlay district, so there is no height limit. It's what you determine is appropriate, you know, for the mixed-use overlay district. So if they came in with an office building, they could ask for a four-story office building under the MXD zoning district as well.
Let me ask it slightly differently. Could they come in with anything without a, what could they come in without a council review?
They could, yeah, go ahead.
An office building. It's owned for office and institution.
With what height? Thirty-five feet?
Possibly slightly higher, depending on where they position the building on the property.
Okay. And then the comments made about the trees, I would just say that anyone could develop without council approval, and those trees would go except for the buffers. The lights, they do have lighting now that will go more down than out, and that will help, so the newer lighting. And the, I can't remember what my comment was there. So I'm going to turn it over to my colleague, Ms. France, since you live so close, I'm going to let you go now.
Thank you. Ryan Road, where it meets Walnut, if you actually cross over Walnut, becomes Tanglewood, and if you go down Tanglewood, the first house you come to is mine. So I am very familiar with the area. We go to Max Tavern a lot, shopping center always. I confess, I even hit the Burger King once in a while, but. So I am very familiar with the area. I see pros and cons with this. I mean, this is infill development. It's infill development near our downtown, something that we've been really working towards trying to get, new investment, you know. The gentleman asked, interesting question, imagine yourself next to a four- or five-story building. I kind of felt some of their concerns back in the day when they built the addition to Cary High School, which is only three stories, but it's a really tall three. I don't know exactly what the height is, but I'd wager it's probably every bit of fifty, fifty-five feet. So I can sympathize with the concerns of being on your deck or looking out your back window and seeing a very tall building. I see it five months out of the year. I actually wish it was senior housing full of fifty-five-year-olds. Instead of sixteen- to eighteen-year-olds in their cars, flying by my house every morning at seven fifteen because they're late for school, and then every afternoon around two-thirty, three o'clock. The one cool thing about Cary High, though, is I hear the band almost twenty-four-seven, so. So it's noise, but it's good noise. So I get the concerns about the height. I would encourage the applicant, as this moves through the process, to do what they can to somehow better condition, give the residences more of a sense of exactly what it's going to look like, where it's going to be, that kind of thing. We haven't seen a three-D model either. We don't see those kind of things. The fancy drawings and stuff like that are about all we get to. And again, if there's some way that that can be conditioned, much like maybe what we heard earlier with the Mills thingy, where they even went to, you know, how many buildings, materials, all that kind of stuff. I mean, I think that would be helpful maybe towards easing some concern. I'm honestly not really that concerned with an increase in traffic. Fifty-five-year-old and older people in their Buicks, they're not going very fast. If, you actually have an existing traffic problem and a speeding problem and a cut-through problem. The old people going fifteen miles an hour in the Buicks might actually slow those cars But, and it's something that I, I know I've actually spoken with Cary PD over the years to try to get some more enforcement on that street, and maybe we need to do a better job and look at that again. So it's an existing problem. I don't know that I see this proposal making that work. And it's more of a residential project, not a commercial project. I get the large front parking lot and stuff, but it's right across the street from stuff with large parking lot and things like that, so. I don't believe criminals just target old people. Actually, with the amount of increased lighting and security that this facility is probably going to have, I think it's probably going to be one of the safer facilities. I know Glen Air is not a high-crime area. Concerns, I'm kind of just going through your list, which I really do appreciate, by the way. The concerns about rent costs and stuff like, we can't control that. It's out of, we legally can't control that. But in regards to economic payback and stuff in the neighborhood, I'm pretty sure that whoever lives here will actually shop at some of the nearby stores and things, so. Totally get the concern regarding the turn, where the crosswalk is. I would hope that the applicant hear those concerns and see what they can maybe do to better implement traffic calming, something to improve visibility and help with the safety concerns that are there. Any building, whether it's office, residential, or whatever, has to meet all the town's regs, rules, regulations regarding stormwater runoff and environmental concerns and all that kind of stuff, so. We've seen some cases where they've actually taken existing problems and made those better. I'm not going to say this is going to do that, because, you know, but they're going to have to comply with all the town's rules and regs. I get the concerns regarding light pollution. The mayor alluded to it, that they've got new special light boxes that shine down, you know, maybe the applicant can look at doing something there with the condition. The buffer, they're actually providing a bigger buffer than what would be required for this development or other developments. I kind of get the concern about the fox and the deer, but the reality is, all your houses, that's where the fox and the deer lived too before your homes were built. You know, I still occasionally see one running across the street at Mills or Franklin near my house, and kind of always surprises me where they probably live, but.
Where they sleep.
So I get that. I'm sensitive to that. I can see the concern about older drivers and the safety, but anyhow. Road construction, totally legit concern. I get that. I would like to hear more about where construction traffic would come from, what times of the day, those kinds of things. Noise disturbances possible twenty-four hours a day. It's across the street from Max Tavern. I hear it at my house, Thursday, Friday, Saturday. I mean, it's, you know, I don't know that the old people watching Jeopardy is going to make a whole lot of noise, but.
It's a good show.
I hear you. Concerns about what the definition of senior, we've heard that's fifty-five. There's something in here, can kids live with their grandparents to go to a certain school? That's a fair question. We've actually, I don't know that we've ever been asked that question before. So I'd like to know more about that, but at the same time, I do not want to prohibit if somebody's parents are terrible and get arrested or whatever, and grandma wants to keep the kid, you know, I just, so. And the interesting comment was, this is a place where kids and high schoolers and troublemakers and stuff congregate and go back there and drink their beer and smoke their weed and whatever, and just cause problems. This will eliminate most of that. This will take all that property and develop, their place won't be there for them to go anymore. And I guarantee you, if some old lady sees some kids out there doing something they're not supposed to be doing, the first thing she's doing is calling the police, or chasing after them with the umbrella or something. I mean, so. You've got some legitimate concerns. I think we've heard them. I know the applicants heard them. The height, light, driver safety on the curve, construction traffic. Maybe give us some better information regarding the runoff and what B N Ps or something might be put on site. Love the greenway connection from the neighborhood to Dunham Park. That is awesome, and it's actually pretty cool that it does comply with a new whole land use plan that we're getting ready to adopt here, hopefully in the next couple of months and be done with that. So those are my comments, so.
Thank you for going through all of them.
That's all.
I missed a whole bunch. You got them all.
Didn't he address us old people? I just thought I might want to.
Well, it's just, I'm getting up there too, dude.
I've never had a Buick. I just want to make that comment.
They're actually good cars.
Other comments?
I only have two that I'd like the applicant to hear, because I know this is still has to go through the process and go to P and Z, so I'd like to say it earlier rather than later. First off, I, as this moves forward, we've had so many people tell us they wish there were more affordable senior housing. And Willow Creek, which is my experience with senior housing, because it's across from, this street from my home, had fifty-three units. So for folks who might want to see what the size of one of these types of apartment buildings looks like, I suggest you go to it. It's Willow Creek off of Davis Drive. That'll give you an idea of the size, but Willow Creek opened with fifty-three units with a three-year waiting list. So this is a need for our community, and it's full of people from the greatest generations. I met school teachers at the grand opening. I met, you know, hard-working, blue-collar folks, so I wouldn't be worried about the clientele of these folks. These are people who are looking to be a part of our Cary community. I love where it's situated. I think infill, from an infill perspective, I'd rather have a seniors than a great big office building, personally. I like this idea. It's right next to recreation where they have tennis and all of that, and also right next to walking, which is where they can go shopping, which is great about Willow Creek because it's right next to a shopping center. My only concerns that I hope the applicant will look at is, I think it's absolutely valid concern about the safety and the concern of the crosswalk. I don't know what can be done in working with the town to make that more viable, more visible, for people to feel safe when they walk between their housing development and shopping. The other thing that does concern me is, I would like to have an idea, it's four-stories building, you know, what is the distance from the front of the building to the back end of a house? I didn't, I couldn't tell that from the staff report, the distance. Obviously, it's more than a hundred feet because we don't allow that per ordinance. So I'd like to have a little bit more information. And the only other concern I had was, I really appreciate the applicant's information about parking that was in this staff report that gave me a really good feeling that a reduction in parking was, was not something big to ask, but I couldn't tell the difference between that parking, if it was a life care parking or if it was senior over fifty-five parking. Life care parking, you know, those are folks who have, you know, potential medical issues, and they're not out driving all the time, whereas active fifty-five-year-olds tend to be active and need more cars. So that information was helpful, but it just wasn't complete enough for me to feel like, yeah, forty-five percent parking decrease is, is something I would like. So I'd love to have more information from the applicant when they make their way through the process.
Thank you. Mr. Smith?
Well, my first reaction when we got the list ahead of time and looking at it was how excited I was, how in support they were of this, because every one of the arguments you presented argued for it. I mean, come on. Well, first of all, I did happen to see the rendering, the sightline. There's no window looking in somebody else's window. It's like two-hundred-and-fifty feet. You've got trees there, and you've got the angle, and when you look at the things, you know, maybe the applicant can put the balloon test out or something like that to make them more comfortable, but when you go through the list, like the crosswalk, we have hundreds of crosswalks. It's a problem we have when people don't obey the law. So I agree that we should look at it, because there might be a lot more traffic there going, walking traffic, you know, going over to the shopping center. If there was anything I would ask the applicant, is you've now provided the community that has complained over the years about the noise, you just provided them the best buffer. I would say protect those seniors, even though they may have hearing aids. You may want to look at having, just like we do in the airplane areas, you may want to have more soundproofing in that building, and I'm not joking about that. I think that that could do that. But you've now put a good use there. You're solving a crime problem, a small one, but there are problems with people in those trees. The last time I looked, trees are a renewable resource, and the applicant does have a right to take them down to build, and if he was putting in industry, it would be a lot worse. So when you look at all the potential uses and you look at all these concerns, these are mitigated by what you're putting there. I mean, it, I've been a long ti, you know, I've been, it's not my first rodeo, but I got to tell you, I was shocked that these would be the arguments against it when I'm reading them, and I see a lot of compelling reasons that would say, you know, you should be, be helping the applicant come along and be a good partner and a good neighbor. And I'm usually not that blunt, but I just, you know, there's no, there's no study in all these years that this as a neighbor is going to hurt your property values. You can talk to it if you want, but we have not had any issues where, once it's developed, once we have a project, we have areas in town that have not compatible uses, but once it's completed by the whole ambiance of Cary, we have not had a problem with housing values going down. They go up. So what you're going to do is you're going to get rid of a lot of unknown, you're going to get in a known product, it's going to help your property values, it's going to provide you a buffer. values, going to provide you a buffer, and it's a good neighbor. I, I'm just, I was, uh, stunned that these were arguments against it. When, when I looked at it, I thought it was something for it. That's my comments.
I, I do, okay. Well, um, I, I appreciate any time citizens go and scrutinize a project that's coming in. I think it really helps, helps in the end to have a better product. So, I really appreciate that they've gone through, and while, you know, council members may look at some of these and say, well, we've, we've seen this before, and it didn't pan out to be a, a concern that was realized, or, you know, the concern didn't, um, end up needing to be there, it's still good to kind of go through and explore the different concerns. The, if I were a neighbor here, the, first and foremost, I would be concerned about the height, and I think it would help a lot for the neighboring residents and for the council, as we're looking at it, to have a rendering that shows the height of the building. And we've seen these before, when you have a tall building proposed next to residential, where you see, kind of like from the first and second story window of the house, you can see a dotted line that shows you what they'll be seeing, because it, the further a building is set back, the less tall it seems. So, i- if the applicant could put together something that reflects the topography and the height of the building and the height of the windows of the neighbors, I think that would either affirm what they're saying and say, well, wait a minute, maybe we need to step this building back or orient it differently on the property, um, or it would allay their concerns. So, I think that would be a good thing to do, and I think it's a great use for this piece of property from, I concur with what Lori has said about the commu- the building that was put in near us, Willow, is it Willow Springs?
Willow Creek.
Willow Creek. I love that building. I think it looks great. It's, I've met the people who live there, and they're delightful, and I love it. So, if, if this can replicate that, I, I think we would be fortunate to have it. The question is, is it oriented on the property the best way for the community? And so, I think we need to explore that and see.
Mr. Jordan?
Two, two comments. I did request more information from the applicant on this, the Evergreen Senior Community Parking for their whole portfolio, which is not this, as, uh, Councilmember Bush asked, would be helpful to have. And on average, of all their communities, which are listed in, in this area, so they're local to this area mostly, and mostly in Raleigh, uh, one other one in Cary, uh, only 67% of the units have a car. So, if we're at 67%, then somewhere about 40 cars, uh, 30 cars or less out of 64 places. So, we're about, about half the parking lot, so I think it's sufficient on the parking, as it's, it keeps in line with their other, their other properties. So, I got a, a, a rendering, uh, that maybe they need to provide to everybody and, and get that out, but I requested. The second thing I would ask about the, the setback is that perhaps the, the concern about the four stories could be mitigated if it, if it were a tapered building, if the part that was next to the, on the backside were three stories, and it were even five stories in the front, or it's four and then five and had some, some height, then, then from the neighborhood, they wouldn't have the four stories the closest to them. They might have three closer to them, and the angle that Ms. Robinson is talking about, um, it would take away. So, I'd love to see a rendering with, with the, with the side view that would show, that would show a lot of sight, but, but I'm very excited about the use of it, I really am.
Well, as a, as a follow-up, uh, you know, I, no, I agree. I think that what you said about the rendering will allay the fears, and they, they have them, so I think they just have to get them out. Um, I don't want to get in the business of redesigning a sight plan. I don't think that's our business. I think they've, they've done that thoughtful. And the other point was, as you said earlier, if it wasn't a, an industrial use, they'd be putting that four stories up, and you'd have no control over it, and it wouldn't even be coming to us. So, you know, we got to, you know, I think we have to, you know, we have to have compassion. We have to recognize any time change happens where it's next to, uh, next to us, it, it causes concerns. But, you know, my appeal is, uh, take a deep breath, work with the applicant, because, uh, and then consider what the alternatives can be. But I, I do think when you see how far the setback, and though there is a slight incline, when you look at the topography of where the houses are, it isn't like Stratford Apartments on, which was my very first one, by the way, when they were like, uh, 12, 12 feet from the homes in Wimbledon, where you literally were, you could kind of reach out and open their window for them. Uh, you're, you're not getting that, and I'm, I mean, I don't want anyone to think that I don't have that concern. I do, but what I'm saying is, I think most of those concerns have been, um, mitigated, and I think they can be improved on, and that'll happen through the process.
Mr. Yarha, do you have anything to add?
Um, not terribly much new after everybody... No, I do appreciate the list of concerns, though, that were, were brought to us, and I appreciate the applicant, uh, one, one resident, rather, speaking on behalf of, of all of them. That's something we always request.
So nice.
And, um, I, I think that's, that's great. Some of the concerns on here resonate more with me than others. Uh, definitely the height is, is the one that I was concerned about when I first saw this, and the renderings that we've all talked about, I think would be helpful if there's something to get us more comfortable with that. Um, it does seem to be a pretty massive building there, but maybe it's not as bad as we think. I do think there's a great need for this type of housing. I strongly support that. Um, and there perhaps could be some additional conditions, if the applicant thinks about it, to alleviate some of these concerns. I think there's, there may be some room for some conditions, uh, that, that might help everybody as, as we go along. But, uh, I think everything else has been said, and then some.
Thank you, Mr. Yarha. And, and I would like to echo those remarks. Please, thank you for bringing, uh, these, uh, concerns and for speaking on behalf of, of the neighborhood. Let me explain the process, and if you already know it, I apologize, but I'm going to explain. Rezoning is the type of use. That's the decision. There are a lot of details about materials or anything else. That's called a sight plan, and that's not what we're deciding. Uh, we're deciding the type of use. However, there are some things that the applicant are, is a, of, that is able to provide that will sort of bleed over the sight plan, but not really, that will help. Now, if the applicant makes changes between tonight and the time it goes to our advisory board, the Planning and Zoning Board, then there will be a public hearing on those changes at the Planning and Zoning Board, which you're invited to speak at that time on those changes. If not, it will probably go to the Planning and Zoning Board within the next couple of months. I'm looking at Ms. Dry, or Ms. Granton, or somebody. Next couple of months, I'm getting a nod, okay. So, maybe, uh, January, February probably is likely, is when it would go to the Planning and Zoning Board, unless there are changes, and then I'll probably bump it out another month. Uh, so they'll review it. They're going to make a recommendation, and it will come back to council, March, April timeframe? Yes, I'm getting a yes for that. And so, we'll have the staff's information. We'll have public input, and we'll have the Planning and Zoning Board's recommendation. At that time, we can make a decision. So, there's a lot of time between now and then, and I would urge the residents to please work with the applicant to see if there's common ground, and see if this list of concerns can be whittled down, and that would help you, and it would help us as well. So, thanks, everyone, for, for their participation in this. And if council members don't have any other questions or concerns, we're going to move to the next public hearing. And the next public hearing is public hearing number 10, uh, which is a round 37 land development ordinance amendment, and Ms. Beerman's going to introduce this item. We will refer to the Planning and Zoning Board, uh, to return to council at a future date. Ms. Beerman?
Thank you. These are the round 37 amendments. Um, this set of amendments is, are initial amendments that are related to the pending adoption of the Cary Community Plan. Uh, it is a companion, uh, to that plan and will be brought forward for a decision at the same time that the Cary Community Plan is brought to you, which, at this point, is tentatively scheduled for January 24th, or if everything goes well. Um, this amendment would modify key terms, references, and procedures, uh, and standards of that nature, or text of that nature, that's really needed for the immediate, smooth transition in going from the Cary Community Plan, or the existing comprehensive plan to the Cary Community Plan, and to have that relationship between the, the land development ordinance and the plan. Uh, I would note that there will be additional amendments brought forward to it, to you in the future, that will be of a more substantive nature to actually implement more, um, aspects, new aspects of the plan, or changing provisions in the plan. So, these are, are more of a technical nature, so that we have that consistency in terminology and procedures. Some of the key aspects, as I mentioned, we're updating descriptions and of the comprehensive plan and its associated documents, eliminating outdated references, um, to various aspects of the current plan, uh, clarifying terms and procedures in various areas. Uh, we're also making some changes that would base the ability to request the rezoning to the MXD District on the new growth framework development categories of the plan, as opposed to the activity center designations that are currently shown. So, that was an important, uh, aspect of this change. And also, uh, because the new plan would be more based in policy, we're proposing to eliminate the requirement for a CPA request where a proposed, um, rezoning request would be inconsistent with the plan. So, those issues would be worked out through the, uh, rezoning process. And that concludes staff's comments, and I'll be, uh, following the public hearing, be available for questions.
Thank you. Now's the time for the public hearing of round 37 land development ordinance amendments, and I would invite our first speaker forward. Anyone to speak at this public hearing? Seeing no one will close the public hearing, open it up to council members for questions or comment. This will go to our Planning and Zoning Board for their input and recommendation. We will see that at a future date. Thank you, Ms. Beerman. We now move to our last public hearing, which is a right-of-way closure of Guernsey Trail and Hereford Lane. Mitchell will present this item, and council may take action.
Good evening, council. Tonight, we are here to hold a public hearing for the closure of Guernsey Trail and Hereford Lane. Here, the sheet's shown in yellow, which is approximately 2.3 acres. This aerial view shows the location of Guernsey Trail off of Kilduff Farm Road, across from the Wake Med Cary Hospital, near the US 1 by Overpass. This slide shows the developers' proposed plans for Parsolet Professional Park, which is a medical park with living space to accommodate the elderly citizens of Cary. Here is a view of Guernsey Trail, and here is a view of Hereford Lane. The closures will not affect existing utility easements, all of which will stay in the place. The public will, was properly notified about tonight's public hearing. No comments were received. Pending the public hearing, staff recommends that the closure of Guernsey Trail and Hereford Lane. If council has no questions, I will turn it over to the mayor to conduct the public hearing.
Thank you. Now's the time for the public hearing for this right-of-way closure, and I would invite our first speaker forward. Anyone to speak at this public hearing? Seeing no one will close the public hearing, open it up to council members for questions, comments, or a motion?
Make a motion to approve staff recommendation.
Second. And the second. Discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you, council.
We now move to our discussion items. Our first discussion item is item 6.116 RZ17, the Mills rezoning. This item has been tabled more than once. It was last tabled at a November 10th council meeting. Council will first need to remove this item from the table before presentation. Is there a motion from council to remove the Mills rezoning from the table?
So moved?
There's a motion?
Second.
And the second. Discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion's unanimous, and we're going to pass this over to Ms. Dry, who will make a brief presentation on this item.
For your consideration, it's a request to rezone approximately 7.71 acres from, on, uh, on Carpenter Uptitch Road, from Residential 40 to transitional residential conditional use. The current zoning, again, for the property is Residential 40. As you can see, it's just south of, uh, the Greenhope High School. The proposed zoning is transitional residential conditional use. The previous conditions up until, um, this meeting that were offered were to limit the land use to detached dwellings or townhomes, a maximum of 40 dwellings, and also install, along the southern property line, um, increased stream buff, or increased, uh, buffers and a privacy fence. Uh, this case was heard by the Planning and Zoning Board. They recommended approval with a vote of 6 to 1 on September 19th. It was then, uh, brought to the October 27th Town Council meeting, where it was tabled, and then again tabled at the November 10th Town Council meeting at the applicant's request to propose additional conditions. Since the November 10th, uh, meeting, the applicant has proposed, uh, conditions. I should note that, um, the full list of conditions that are, are being proposed are included in your staff report and the draft ordinance, which is an attachment in your, um, in your packet. Essentially, they are to provide a pedestrian connection to the property to the north or the east. The ultimate location will be determined at the time of site plan review. Uh, there'll be a maximum of five units per townhome building. Uh, they've also added a number of architectural requirements, um, increased the community gathering space to 2,000 square feet, and also mandated that each unit would have a two-car garage. Um, I should also note that at the, the last meeting on November 10th, uh, one of the applicant's representatives referenced the pricing point for what she were looking to sell the properties at once they were developed. And as you know, and for the audience's consideration, that, that's not something that can be entertained as a zoning condition. So, just wanted to point that out for the record. Um, so with that, this concludes staff's presentation. Uh, we'll be available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Baron, if you have anything to add, I know you spoke of all the changes earlier. I would invite you to do that, uh, not repeating what you've already said, but adding any additional information.
I don't have anything to add. I'm just proud I got it all in in three minutes.
Thank you, Ms. Baron. So, this has been tabled twice, and, uh, as a result, I do think we have a better proposal. I know that, uh, there are three council members that are pretty solid one way and three the other, and I've been sitting on the fence, and it hurts to sit on the fence. I don't like sitting on the fence.
I've got some litters in your butt.
I try. So, I've been sitting on the fence for like two months now, and I'm ready to get off the fence. So, I've looked at this, looked at, uh, the, uh, conditions, looked at all of the citizen comments, and I would like to address the, a few, the way I see them. Uh, the biggest concern is traffic. Um, this is a state road that they don't plan to improve at any time. What does this do? Well, I can tell you, in my personal opinion, with a simulation background and math degree, et cetera, et cetera, that it will not statistically change the traffic pattern on this road at all. Will it add to it? Of course it will. Anything will add to it. Um, so, in my mind, uh, something that's out of their control, which is the traffic and the road, and nothing they can do about it except for not build, but they have the right to build, I have to take that away from my decision. So, I'm not considering the road, which is a major concern of many of the residents, and, and I'm hoping that we can work with the state to get something done about that regardless of what happens here. Uh, then there's the, uh, land use plan. The land use plan says medium density residential. That means so many units per acre. Does this fit in there? It absolutely does, even with the, um, buildable area. It fit in the medium density residential. So, it's matching the land use plan. And then I got comments about, well, why don't we leave it with the current zoning? Well, the current zoning is R40. That is not a, a zoning that we have, except for out in Chatham County in our plans. An R40 zoning is a holding zoning, waiting for the, it's when it goes from county to incorporated, uh, then it's given an R40 zoning until it is ready for development, and then the zoning has to match the land use plan before they can develop, and that's why they're here. Uh, so they're asking for a zoning to match the land use plan. So, in my mind, we have a better product, uh, because of what has been added, and, and I would, I thank you, Mr. Baron, and your staff, and whoever else you work with, to bring all these conditions forward. I feel much better, uh, than I did the last time we met as a group, and, uh, I'm prepared to support this. Uh, and with the caveat, I know there's a traffic problem, but I don't think it is the developer's problem on that traffic. That pr- traffic problem exists. It's going to exist either way, and it's a po- problem of the state, and that has to be worked on with the state. And so, that's how I'm viewing that problem. Additional comments from my colleagues? I know you...
I mean, I think all the comments have always already been made. Um, I would just like to echo your comments that this is a better project, and I think even those that are going to vote against this, I hope they realize they made this a better project. Um, a number of their concerns, I think, were addressed. Maybe not satisfactorily or enough, but I think everyone has helped to make this a better project. So, for that, I am grateful. If there's no other comments, I will be happy to make a motion.
Other comments?
Make a motion to approve 60- Make a motion to approve 16REZ17 with the added conditions by the applicant.
There's a motion and a second discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Motion carries four to three consistency statement.
Make a motion to approve the statement and consistency of reasonableness for 16REZ17.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Motion carries four to three. Thank you, Ms. France and Ms. Dry. We now move to our third discussion item. It's round 35, land development ordinance amendment. Ms. Spearman will give a report. We're going to hear from planning and zoning board about their recommendation, and council may take action. Ms. Spearman.
This is an amendment to replace the town sign ordinance. As you recall, this was, proposal was based on a recent Supreme Court decision that sign ordinances throughout the country must be neutral with regard to the sign message. So these are changes that have been made in order to comply with that Supreme Court decision. In terms of a general overview, we would be deleting existing chapters 9A and 9B and nine, the existing chapter nine, which are all chapters that contain sign regulations now, and we would be creating a new chapter nine that merge all those together. In terms of any substantive changes, we're proposing a new approach for temporary signs, and then for permanent signs, there would be really minimal changes to any of those requirements. This just shows a basic overview. Generally, the approach that we're taking now for temporary signs would base those regulations on the number of signs rather than on the purpose or the type of sign. More signs would be allowed on residential property, the non-residential property, as there are additional permanent signs that are allowed for non-residential properties, and commercial speech is less protected than the non-commercial speech. So we felt like that was a good balance of numbers that you could consider. And again, this general approach in looking at the number of signs is what we feel is an important feature of this decision, or this, I'm in light of the Supreme Court decision. A few other changes. We would also expand, there's language to expand the purpose and intent of the ordinance, clarify and update some definitions and classifications, and just provide some consistency in the allowable sign area across all zoning districts. There were no speakers at the public hearing. There was some general discussion by council regarding the new approach to the temporary Planning and zoning board did make a recommendation, and I'll ask Mr. Evangelista to present that. One comment I would make as you consider those recommendations, that there was a change recommended by the planning and zoning board that staff considered and actually concurred with, so we did make a change to the text so that if, so that the proposed text does incorporate that recommended change.
Thank you, Ms. Spearman. Welcome, Mr. Evangelista.
Hello. Thank you, ma'am. The change that Ms. Spearman refers to was enough for the motion to approve the original text to fail by a three to six margin. And when the change was put forward by one of our members, that change being the elimination of the minimum distance between signs, I believe it was 15 feet as proposed, rather than coming with a lesser value, we just eliminated that altogether, and that passed by a seven to two vote. We understand and greatly appreciate that. We now have to come to this one-size-fits-all, so to speak, and as we refer to the old sign ordinances, there's a great appreciation for certain types of temporary signs that we've all seen in the last month or so, had a good set of criteria around them, but now we must envelop them all into, under one umbrella, and that makes it a little tougher. Putting the limits on the numbers could be problematic two years from now or whenever this next cycle happens, but we just thought that's the best solution we can come up with. But when it came to a distance between signs that would somehow take someone based on lot size and somehow indirectly get to their ability to express themselves simply by the geometry of their lot, we couldn't figure out how that didn't seem arbitrary, so we just eliminated it. And as Ms. Spearman said, that's now carried through in what's before you. Have you any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Evangelista. You guys do good work, but I thought that was great when I saw that you eliminated the distance. I can see staff out there with tape measures, measuring it. We really don't need to be doing that, so. I think that was a great catch and a great recommendation.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Other comments?
Go ahead, Jack.
No, no.
That was the one that caused me the problem early on, was that 15-foot, thinking how they would do on some skinny lots versus fat lots. Didn't think it was fair.
I think the staff has crafted excellent language here that affects the changes that we've been deemed to make and still maintains the integrity of the ordinance, which is really very important. I certainly concur with the removal of the spacing requirement. In the interest of time, I can make a motion, I guess, to approve the recommendation from the staff that includes the removal of this minimum spacing requirement.
Is there a second?
A second.
Second discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously consistency statement.
Make a motion to approve the statement of consistency and reasonableness.
Second.
Motion and a second discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Spearman. We now move to our fifth discussion item, item 6.5, status and authorization to proceed with the Hollybrook Water and Sewer Extension Project and multi-party agreement. Mr. Brown will introduce this item, and council may take action. Mr. Brown.
Thank you. Good evening, council. Since the Hollybrook neighborhood was legislatively annexed in 2015, staff has been working closely with the residents, the homeowners association, and their current utility providers to ensure a smooth transition of services to finish fully connecting these new Carey citizens to our utility systems. The neighborhood, Hollybrook neighborhood, is in this map. The design of the town-owned water and sewer line extensions that will serve this neighborhood is now nearly complete and will be ready to bid the construction work early in 2017. So the purpose of this staff report is to clarify some of the final responsibilities between the different parties. So to summarize, staff's recommendation is that council adopt a resolution authorizing the town manager or deputy town manager to execute a multi-party agreement substantially like that attached between the town, the homeowners association, Aqua North Carolina, and the Hollybrook Sewer LLC that clarifies the responsibilities of each party toward maintaining continuity of utility service throughout the transition, memorializes financial responsibilities of each party, and delineates the proper removal and abandonment of older utility systems that won't be needed. This report also contains some additional detail of our work with the Hollybrook residents and their HOA to clarify the responsibilities of each as we implement this project. While we didn't feel it was necessary to have a separate agreement for these details, we do ask council to approve this staff report as our project approach, and since this documents about a year and a half's worth of discussions with the neighborhood. And with that, I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Questions, comments, or a motion?
I just want to make one comment. I appreciated the fact that a citizen came today. We don't often hear from them unless there's something wrong, right? This one was, you know, there was something right, and this has been a long and painful process for them, and I appreciate that when somebody makes that extra effort. And I'll make a motion that we move forward and approve the recommended project approach and the responsibilities between the town and the Hollybrook Association and the individual property owners that's in the staff report, and also, well, I'll just do that. Do I have to do them separately? Or can I put them in one motion? Oh, yay. And also make a, that we adopt the attached resolution that was in the staff report approving the Hollybrook Project multi-party agreement and authorizing the town manager or the deputy town manager to execute the agreement substantially like the agreement that's within and provide such notices and take action as the agreement contemplates.
There's a motion and a long one at that. Is there a second?
I'm not sure I got all of them.
Here's in the staff report.
Second discussion.
Yes, want to thank staff for all your guys' work. I know this was a very, very complicated project that started some time ago to include getting the state legislature to actually annex them for us since they took away our ability to annex. So been a long time coming. You all have done a job well done, and I'm glad to have this one behind us.
Amen. Any other comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Thank you.
We now move to our last discussion item, fiscal year 2016 intersection improvement project, ST 1251, final project list, concept maps, and scope of improvement at each intersection. Mr. Amir will present. I'm not trying to say your last name.
Nesarati.
Nesarati.
Yeah, just how it's spelled.
That's not that bad.
Yeah. Mr. Nesarati.
It's not like wine brek.
Got burned? Know that one. Mr. Nesarati will present this item, and council may take action. Mr. Nesarati.
Good evening, mayor and council. The FY 2016 intersection improvements project is an opportunity to achieve greater mobility for our community and all street users. Staff recommends approval of the final list of intersections, including the associate's concept maps and scope. Staff also requests the flexibility to revise the extent of the improvements based on the available budget and the final cost estimates. So throughout the different intersection improvements, our goals were to improve safety, reduce congestion, and also keeping in mind the aesthetics of our transportation system. We are going to achieve these goals by reducing collision potentials by extending turn lanes, upgrading pedestrian facilities, including shortening crossing distances for pedestrians. We also expect fewer backups, improved traffic flow, and improved signal timing. And like I said, we consider the aesthetics of all these different intersections, including landscaping, and then upgrading our wooden poles to new metal poles. The list of intersections and draft concept maps were approved by town council during the July 14th, 2016 council meeting. Since then, a public meeting was held. The concept maps have been finalized to what we have today, and we also have refined the cost estimates. The recommended list includes Chapel Hill Road from Bowden Street to Sorrel Street, Killer Farm Road and Advent Court, Killer Farm Road and 1010 Road, Southwest Carey Parkway and Waldo Rude Boulevard, Waldo Rude Boulevard and MacArthur Drive, High House Road from Carpenter Upchurch Road to Whittington Lane. That also includes Jenks Carpenter Road. And then the last one, Davis Drive and Waldo Rude, was presented on November 10th, which was approved, and we're working with NC DOT on that project. The first intersection on the list is Chapel Hill Road from Bowden to Sorrel. The improvement includes widening Chapel Hill Road to add a center two-way left turn lane. There's currently no left turn lanes within this stretch. Therefore, left-turning vehicles are causing backups. Vehicles are trying to bypass these backups by dangerously passing stopped vehicles on the right. It's illegal, dangerous, and also, as shown in the picture, damaging our shoulders. Next, we have Killer Farm Road and Advent Court near Waverly Place. Safety and congestion improvements include extending the southbound left turn lane on Killer Farm Road, adding a new separate northbound right turn lane, and also upgrading the pedestrian curb ramps. We also propose realigning the crosswalks spanning the northern leg of the intersection, reducing the crossing distance. Aesthetically, the improvement includes replacing the wooden poles with metal poles. Existing median will be impacted, but we will revegetate with appropriate-sized plantings. We will also revegetate the outside shoulder in the northbound direction. These two pictures we have are some of the traffic backups on Killer Farm Road. On the bottom picture is the northbound. You can see a vehicle in the background trying to pass a stopped vehicle, which is also dangerous. The next intersection is Killer and 1010 Road. Congestion improvements include widening Killer Farm Road to provide a dual southbound left turn lane, as well as adding a new westbound right turn lane on 1010 Road. The safety improvements include upgrading the pedestrian ramps, realigning the crosswalks on the northern and eastern legs of the intersection to reduce the crossing distance. This project will also provide an opportunity to install a new segment of landscape median on Killer Farm Road near the Wake Tech entrance. And then these pictures are also of Killer Farm, the top pictures of Killer Farm, the bottom picture is of 1010. The next intersection we have is Southwest Carey Parkway and Waldo Rude. Safety and congestion improvements include extending the northbound left turn lane on Carey Parkway, also better aligning the opposing left turns to provide better sight distance at the intersection, adding a new right, separate southbound right turn lane, and adding a second left turn lane on Waldo Rude Boulevard. Pedestrian improvements include making signal timing adjustments to add a protected phase exclusively per pedestrians to give them time to get into the intersection and be more noticeable. That's the main goal. We also include upgrading the curb ramps and crosswalks. On the top picture, on a, that's, that is Waldo Rude. You can see the traffic extending past the next intersection it hadn't field. Next up is Waldo Rude Boulevard and MacArthur Drive, close to the one we just talked about. The safety improvements at this intersection include traffic signal installation, a new traffic signal on metal poles, upgrade in the pedestrian facilities, which also allows us to add a new protected crossing across Waldo Rude. And currently, there's only, you can only cross Waldo Rude at Davis and Carey Parkway, so this is adding another one. This project will also give us an opportunity to add a section of landscape median on the west side of this intersection on Waldo Rude. And finally, we have High House Road from Carpenter Upchurch Road to Whittington Lane, also including Jenks Carpenter. The proposed improvements include installing a new dedicated leftover into Whittington Lane, installation of a new traffic signal at Jenks Carpenter Road, including extending the left turn lane on Jenks Carpenter, and pedestrian facility improvements on all legs of the intersection, including pedestrian islands at Jenks Carpenter to reduce the crossing distances. This project will also provide opportunities similar to other ones to add some more median landscape. There's one proposed section on the west side of Jenks Carpenter, and then the picture I have on the PowerPoint is of Carpenter Upchurch. There's a wide pavement section, which, there's some asphalt that's not currently in use, and we will shift the lanes and be able to provide a landscape median along Jenks Carpenter So the next steps, moving forward, the project team will proceed with detailed designs, and I did want to note that many of these are on state-maintained roads, so we will need approval from NC DOT, just like all of our projects. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Questions for Mr. Nesarati?
Not questions.
Motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second discussion.
Yeah, just a comment. I'm thrilled with the one on Chapel Hill Road and 54, especially with that being one of our gateways into downtown. But I can't tell you how many times you're going down that and someone's wanting to turn left, and it blocks the whole darn road all the way back, so. Long time coming. Love it.
And I would say the same thing about High House. It's fantastic that we're getting it now. This is, this is going to make it so much more safe. I'm really happy to have this.
You know, I'll comment, they're doing it at such a lower cost than that total railroad bridge realignment, $25 million deal, and this will accomplish the same thing by having staggered stoplights close together that they never thought they could have, so this is wonderful.
Really happy.
Any other comments? Great stuff. The 1010 is much needed. So we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Nesarati. Thank you, Mr. Nesarati, and I look forward to having him back and another council member where I will know your name.
All right, good. Thank you.
We have no other items on our agenda, and we have no closed session this evening, so I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I've never seen him speak up that quick.
Discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned.